All the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of October 22, 2020 to order. For those who would like to join us and are able to stand, please stand as Police Chief Brian Reyes leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. If you can stand, please stand. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Reyes. City Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Putim Holdstead is absent. Mayor Coors?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mahia. We will now move on. We have a number of presentations. And the first one is a proclamation declaring October as LGBTQ History Month and October 11th as National Coming Out Day. I will read this one. Whereas the city of Palm Springs is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family. And whereas the city of Palm Springs recognizes the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas this nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that includes that every person has been created equal, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law. And whereas the city of Palm Springs recognizes the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer or questioning community as a vital part of all fields and professions and contributes to a stronger community. And whereas the city of Palm Springs is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its citizens and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and/or gender identity. And whereas the city of Palm Springs is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of all its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character and diversity of our city. And whereas the city of Palm Springs recognizes the need for a safe environment for those who desire to come out as members of the LGBTQ community. And whereas the Center for Disease Control recognizes that LGBTQ teens are at a higher risk to be victims of violence and have an increased risk of suicide. And whereas it is imperative that young people in the community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas in 2007, Palm Springs became the first city in the nation to elect an all LGBTQ city council and the first city in California to elect a transgender candidate to the city council. And whereas Palm Springs was the first city in the nation to enact an equal benefits ordinance that requires equal healthcare benefits for transgender workers of businesses seeking contracts for the city. And whereas many members of the LGBTQ community have made and continue to make significant contributions to our city and society as a whole, which we now recognize and honor, now therefore be it resolved that we, the city council of Palm Springs, California, do hereby urge citizens to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ community and actively promote the principles of equality and liberty and recognize October 11, 2020 as Coming Out Day for the LGBTQ community. Furthermore, be it resolved that we, the city council of the city of Palm Springs, by the power vested in us to hereby join Rodney Wilson, who established October as a month dedicated to the celebration and teaching of LGBTQ history, to proclaim and recognize October 2020 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer or Questioning History Month, and this is signed by the entire Palm Springs City Council. Thank you for that. And Councilmember Garner has a proclamation she will be presenting this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very honored to present this proclamation for Filipino-American History Month and Larry Etoile Day. This is it, and I'll read it. Whereas the Filipino-American National Historical Society first declared and observed Filipino-American History Month in October 1992 to commemorate the first recorded presence of Luzones Indios on a Spanish galleon that came ashore on what is now Moro Bay, California, on October 18, 1587. And whereas in California, Filipino-American History Month was first recognized in 2006 by the California Department of Education and recognized in 2009 by the State of California. The 133rd United States Congress in 2009 passed a resolution officially recognizing October as Filipino-American History Month. And whereas Governor Gavin Newsom in 2019 issued the proclamation declaring October 25 as Larry Etoile Day in the state of California. And whereas Larry Etoile was born on October 25, 1913, in San Nicolas, Bangasinan, Philippines, later emerging as a leader in the Filipino-American community of Manong's respected brothers and elders who helped shape the farm labor movement and served in the U.S. military during World War II. And whereas Larry Etoile, Philip Vera Cruz, Benjamin Guinness, Pete Velasco, and the Manong Leadership of Agricultural Workers Organizing Committee in the spring of 1965 fought alongside grape workers in the Coachella Valley for increased pay. And whereas Filipinos with Cesar Chavez, Delores Huerta, and the National Farm Workers Association worked together on the September 1965 Delano Grape Strike and the nationwide boycott of grapes that lasted five years and led to the first farmworker union contracts. And the joining of these labor organizations formed the United Farm Workers. And whereas Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian-American group in the United States and the third-largest ethnic group in California, and the Coachella Valley is home to a large Filipino population representing the largest Asian-American and Pacific Islander community in the desert. And whereas the Palm Springs neighborhood of Veterans Tract is home to a Filipino enclave formed by Manong's Filipino World War II veterans of the U.S. military, their families, and descendants, in addition to the influx of Filipinos following the U.S. Immigration and Nationality Act of 1965. And whereas longstanding organizations such as the Filipino-American Association of the Coachella Valley was founded in the 1960s originally as the Palm Springs Filipino-American Club to celebrate the Filipino community's diverse culture and honor war veterans. National Alliance of Filipino-Americans has provided free medical outreach in Palm Springs and cultural programs throughout the Coachella Valley. And Bayamihan Desert was formed during the districting of Palm Springs in 2018 to engage Filipinos in the city and help shape the first majority-minority District One, which includes Veterans Tract. And whereas Filipinos have contributed greatly to the cultural, intellectual, economic, social, spiritual, and political life of the United States and continue to shape the history of Palm Springs, the Coachella Valley, and the United States. And now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, do hereby proclaim October 20, October 20, 2020, and every October thereafter as Filipino-American History Month. And proclaim October 25, 2020, and every October 25 thereafter as Larry Etoile Day in the city of Palm Springs and urge all persons in the city and Coachella Valley region to join in these important observances. Filipino-American History Month and Larry Etoile Day provides opportunities to promote the study of Filipino-American history and culture, recognize the richness of Filipino-American experience, and honor the contributions of Filipino-Americans. So, thank you all for all that you do in our city.
Very nice. Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Our next presentation is a COVID-19 update from the city manager, city manager David Reddy.
Thank you. Thank you. We have just a couple slides. If we could put the first slide up, please. Thank you. I would just like to note that, as many of you now know, that we have moved back from the red to the purple category, and that basically means that we've had more than seven cases per day per 1,000. As you can see, in Riverside County, that was 8.4. So, we have moved back to the purple category. And we did want to just make sure everyone is aware of what that means, what those changes entail. So, obviously dining must return to outdoors, gyms and fitness centers operate again outdoors only, and places of worship are outdoors. What does stay the same, and it was changed from the last time we were in the purple category, is nail salons, hair salons, and other personal care facilities may continue indoor operations, obviously with certain protocols. So, that is a difference. And again, we're going to have to remain in the purple tier for at least three weeks before we are eligible to turn back to the red tier with improved metrics. So, the testing, obviously, is an important piece of that. And the next presentation, Mayor, I'm going to turn that back over to you because you have some information on testing. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. And I think we have a slide on testing as well.
Yeah, we'll get that put up.
Okay. So, we're working in partnership with the county and other cities throughout the valley to, one, encourage people to get tested. One of the matrix that the state is looking at is how many people are getting tested, and we're down considerably from where we were and where we need to be. And, you know, half the people who are positive for the coronavirus and contagious are asymptomatic and don't know it. So, it's so important that everyone gets tested, one, so none of us inadvertently spread it, but also so we know what the real rate is within the community. And we all need to do our part and get tested. So, really want to encourage people. We had testing at the convention center last week. It was the first time the county provided free testing in the city of Palm Springs. We had the most testing that they've ever had. We had over 1,000 people in three days, hundreds of people who wanted to get tested, who weren't able to get appointments. So, we're working with the county to continue that. We don't have dates yet. It looks like the first week in November, but we'd like to see that weekly if we can to get tested here and to see some more testing at night as well for people who work during the day and can't take time off. But there are a lot of places where people can get tested. A lot of pharmacies offer free testing. I don't know if there's another slide with that information or not, but we have that on our website. But yes, there are. We can go back to the other one that had the list. One back, please. There you go. So, there's testing at Desert AIDS Project, at Desert Oasis, just for their patients, and CVS Pharmacy. You can do it online. There's also testing at Cathedral City, Desert Hot Springs, and Palm Desert. So, we'll have all that information on our website with a link on the homepage, and really want to encourage people to get tested. The other thing that's just so important to know that is doing our part and following the rules is how we're going to get the numbers. the rules is how we're going to get the numbers back where we need them today and going in the downward direction instead of seeing an upward spike as we're starting to see. And that's, most importantly, to avoid commingling with other households. Three households can be at someone's house if outside together, as long as they're six feet apart at all times, wearing face coverings, except if they're eating and drinking, and not inside together. So really important, that's been a big concern, both at the federal and local level. From the county is that people are gathering with friends and family, understandably. We all want to do more of that. And as we enter the holidays, there's going to be more desire to do that. But that's when people take their guard down, get people from any household together, and they're seeing that as a major cause of spread. And also people who are in essential jobs, who are in the workforce, you know, make sure you and your employer are following the rules. And it's, you know, wearing face coverings, washing your hands, and maintaining social distancing. And all the evidence supports that those three things could avoid 95% of the new infections. And the sooner we can all do those, the sooner we get those numbers down, the sooner we can return to some semblance of a more normal life, open up more of the economy, and see our family and friends. Do want to say that Palm Springs numbers are in the lower part of the Coachella Valley the increases. I really want to commend our businesses and residents who are doing a great job overall. And it's important we just maintain it, that it's not over, and we just have to stick with this as hard as it is for so many people. But to have businesses have to go backwards and close indoor fitness and restaurants, not to be able to be indoors, not everyone has outdoor patios. We're working with anyone who wants to expand their space, including on sidewalks and public streets and parking spaces. But it's really hard for our businesses to survive this. So if we all do our part, we can get back down into red in three weeks and get more businesses open. So thank you for that. Next, we have an election update from our city clerk, Anthony Mahia.
And if I could get that presentation?
Honorable Mayor and City Council and residents and voters, we have our municipal and presidential election on November 3rd. We do have vote-by-mail drop-off locations here at City Hall and at Demuth Park. Demuth Park is open Monday through Friday from 10:00 to 3:00. And Palm Springs City Hall is open from Monday to Thursday from 8:00 to 6:00. And over the next two weekends, we'll be extending our hours to Friday and Saturday, and we will have a drop-off location curbside at City Hall from 10:00 to 3:00. We do have early voting this coming weekend. The closest location is the Palm Desert Westfield Mall. So if you want to go out there, you can use one of the voting machines and do in-person voting. You can also go to the Riverside County Register of Voters office as well. And beginning October 31st, the voting assistance centers will open up, and voters will be able to vote in person. If you are not registered to vote but eligible, you can also do same-day voter registration, and once you're verified, you'll be given a provisional ballot, and you'll be allowed to vote as well. The Demuth Community Center, James O. Jesse Unity Center, and Palm Springs Public Library are the voting assistance centers in Palm Springs. And of course, if you do need same-day voter registration, like I said, any of the voting access centers you can go to, or you can go to the Riverside County Register of Voters Office in Riverside on any day, and they will be able to assist you as well. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. It's been great to see so many people coming to City Hall to drop their ballots off. So thank you and your staff for doing such a great job with this. Our next item is COVID-friendly Halloween events. We have Parks and Rec.
Cynthia Verrado Crawford is here, Parks and Rec Director. She has an exciting program to announce. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Hey, everybody. Recreation Waldo here to announce our COVID-friendly Halloween events. We will be starting our Halloween events this Saturday and Sunday with a floating pumpkin patch at the Swim Center. The hours of operation for our floating pumpkin patch will be from 1:30 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. by reservation only. Adults are $5, and kids are $3. It's going to be a really good time. Tomorrow, we should start seeing some footage go up on social media showcasing our floating pumpkins to really get our crowd excited about attending. After the weekend, we will go, Thursday, we will be hosting a drive-through at the leisure center, and that will be from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It is $5 per vehicle. There will be some cars decorated in the trunk-or-treat classic fashion, and we'll have some drive-through games that they can participate, all are COVID-friendly. And then on Friday, we will have a haunted Halloween drive-through at the James O. Jesse Center. That one, we will be lining up, just like we do for the food distribution that we do. And that event will go from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and it's free to the community. So that is what we have in store for our city.
Great. Terrific. Thank you and your staff for your work on this and the creativity. And then our last presentation is our quarterly financial review. It will be the city manager, David Reddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If we could put up the budget presentation, please? Great. So this is just going to be a brief presentation with regard to our first quarter update of financial review. As you recall, we were going to make sure everyone in council is updated monthly, so this actually is our first quarterly review. And there's no action or direction that we're asking for this evening. This is merely a presentation. We will put this on the agenda at our next city council meeting for any further direction from city council and staff. We'll have some recommendations that I will note later in this presentation. So this is a brief presentation. So I'll get started. The one thing... Okay. Here we go. So with regard to, I'm going to do this. I'm going to start with a summary, and then I'm going to work backwards. And if you just give me a moment, I think it's important to do this so everyone gets an idea. Here we go. I'm going to start with the summary, and then we'll go back. So for the first quarter, our TOT, sales tax, Measure J, as you can see, we have additional revenue over what was budgeted, for a total of about 11.7 million. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily we have an 11.7 million windfall. What that means is, as you know, we've reduced our revenue projections significantly because of COVID. So this represents 11 million point seven over what our projections were. But as you can see at the bottom, that 1.3 million, we are 1.3 million less than we were this same time during the pre-COVID, the same period last fiscal year in 2019, 2020. So as you can see, we're down from before, but what we are up on is our reduced budget revenues that we budgeted. So that's an important thing to remember. Now I'm going to go back to Slide 2. Okay. Great. All right. So here we have our TOT, and this shows you exactly from 2018, 19 through currently of what in each of those months that that revenue was. And then this is how it compares to our actual, what was budgeted. So these differences are actually from our reduced budget projections because of COVID. So on the TOT tax, you can see that that is, we've totaled 4.7 million over what was budgeted. So that's good news. But again, recall, we had to bring in a significant amount of fund balance just to balance the budget this year. Now, you'll see this as we move through the year. We're going to map this out on a month-to-month for these taxes, and we'll be able to keep a running total of exactly where we are. With regard to sales tax, as you can see, again, this is comparison the last three years, and sales tax is, it was 681,000 less compared to 1920. However, it is up compared to our current budgeted at 4.9. And again, this is compared to our actual budgeted revenues. And we will be keeping the monthly, the month-to-month log on sales tax. Measure J, again, Measure J revenue is listed here compared to the last two fiscal years, and then the difference from what was budgeted. So you can see in July, August, and September, again, those were higher numbers. So and then we'll have the month-to-month that we'll be able to show you there as well. So that again takes us back to the summary slide, which in essence, it's 11.7 million additional revenue, which is good for us currently. If this trend continues, then we will be able to, I think, maybe make some recommendations on modifying our budget projections. I would like to at least wait for one more month of receipts to see what occurs, particularly because we've now moved back into the purple category. And so the next month, we will give you a little bit more recommendation if we want to change the revenue estimates. And again, that final number, we are still 1.3 million less than we were at this time last year. Now, next meeting, when we talk about the budget in terms of what should potentially be done, this is a list of personnel items that we believe we do need to replace. Now, this is a combination of those that were frozen and some that have taken the early retirement program. And as you can see here, approximately four firefighters and the police department, the two sergeants, one will be funded by grants, and particularly, we see a code officer, a community service officer. What we're finding is that we're going to, we need some extra assistance in those areas as well. Downtown maintenance, a plans examiner. And in finance, we want to reclass the deputy city treasurer downward to an accounting manager. The finance director believes that that actually will fill the gap that she has, and we can save some dollars there. And of course, our HR director is retiring at the end of the year, and we believe that's a position important enough that we do need to move forward. So this is just, I want to give you a preview of what we will ultimately be recommending at the next council meeting, and with that, we would get additional direction at that time. So that's the presentation. Could answer any questions, Mayor.
Anyone have any questions for the city manager? Thank you for the update, and nice to see some revenue coming in, absolutely. So that will conclude our presentations, and we'll move on to our next item, which is acceptance of the agenda. City council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items removed for separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items, any council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate vote or discussion? None? Okay. I have one, which is 1L.
Mr. Mayor, we are requesting that we remove 1N from the agenda. We will bring that back to a future meeting.
Okay. So then if we can get a motion to accept the agenda, noting the removal of 1N and 1L for separate discussion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Garner, second by Councilmember Middleton.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Kors.
Yes.
Motion passes 4 to 0.
Thank you. City Attorney Jeff Ballinger, can you please provide a report on the closed session?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public, the city council met in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you're speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers via telephone. City Clerk Mahia, can you please begin?
Hello, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
You're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Great. Thank you very much. This is Brad Anderson. I actually live in the city of Ratch Mirage. I wanted to mention a few items tonight. Just so you know, on the record here, I was told or informed by the city clerk's office that I only have two minutes to comment on any item that I wanted to speak on concerning, because I have five items I'd like to talk about, so I'm limited to two minutes for five items. So anyway, I'll see what I can get through. The first one, I talked about this in closed session, but this is item 1J, and that's concerning the recruitment for the city manager. And I don't know if most people would know, but there's like $30,000 that's going to be spent on that. And that's just something the city should look at, especially in this time, this critical time of the city's finances. And then item 1L, and that's the DCE, that's a letter that you're going to send to the Public Utterly Commission. And it's really all concerning about climate chain or the perceived climate change agenda of the city. So that's something people need to know about. And if you look at the authors, the other authors of that letter, it's really nobody that you really should be associated with. So and nobody from this valley is signing onto that letter that I'm aware of, anyone. And item 2A, public hearing, that's for the, well, oh, that's a public hearing, I'm sorry, that's going to be later. And then I guess I'm going to wait till the public comment too. So I guess I'm done for now. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Mr. Willie Holland, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council. First and foremost, I would just like to thank Dr. David Reddy and the entire city council for just adopting the social equity program for the city of Palm Springs. Secondly, I'd also like to thank Veronica Goodheart and Michael Malin for working vigorously to make this program a success. If approved, I promise to make the program a success and create jobs and educate the minorities in the cannabis industry. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Holland, and we'll disconnect. David Friedman, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mahia. Good evening, Mayor Kors and council members. My name is David Friedman. I am Chair of Desert Community Energies Community Advisory Committee and its Palm Springs Working Group, and a member of the city's Sustainability Commission and its Standing Committee on Solar and Green Building. For the record, I am speaking on item 1L in my individual capacity and not on behalf of those bodies. At its meeting this past Monday, the DCE board approved signing onto a letter to the DCE asking for more transparency on the CICA activity, the CCA customer's pay, or power purchased by the IOUs before they became CCA members. I am asking the council to add its name to this letter and show it for changes needed at the CCA around the CICA.
David? 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 David?
Yes.
Where happened? Where you were.
Okay. The CAC strongly supports build transparency. We recommend that DCE have an online build comparison tool. The DCE board approved it. It will be up on DCE's website in the coming weeks. Local workforce development is another of our priorities. One of the factors we stress in the selection of wind and solar projects is long-term energy impact, including two wind projects within the Palm Springs city limits. We are working with DCE to review potential programs for customers, including incentives for electric vehicle purchases and charge stations, energy efficiency programs, solar rebates, and battery storage. An important feature of DCE like other CCA's is that excess revenue from electricity generation is reinvested back in the city for projects such as the ones I just mentioned. Finally, the CAC's Palm Springs Working Group has a vacancy. We do not have any members from District One or the Hispanic or AAPI entities. Share your recommendations. District 1 or the AAPI entities. State your recommendations to help us fill those gaps and ensure the PSWG is representative of all Palm Springs residents. I'm available for any questions you have on the CAC's activities. Consideration.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect.
My name is Jeter Crawford. I'm speaking on my own behalf. I just want to call in tonight and show my support for the distance waiver for Holland Farms. Holland Farms is the first applicant in the social equity program, and I believe this will help diversify the cannabis industry in Palm Springs. We've been working for a while now to try to expand the cannabis industry, and I think this would be a good first step. And then the other item I'd like to speak on is the social equity program assessment. In speaking with the applicant, we believe that the program can be expedited, that the process is still lengthy. The applicant also mentioned that the odor control process was over, and it took a while to come safe. And that's all I have for today.
Okay. Thank you, and we'll disconnect.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would like to say, to express my appreciation to Veronica, I think her assistance and expertise has really enhanced the image of the city, so thank you. And to the city for applying for the social equity program. But let's face it, they knew from the very beginning that there were shortcomings with this program. And it's really, it's really, I'm sorry, I'm having technical difficulty here. It's really insufficient, because it pretty much sets them up for failure without additional funding. And the first thing that they suggest is that they get a co-investor, which dilutes the sole proprietorship for a minority business that's venturing out for the first time. So what I am asking you to do as a city to consider a letter of support that can be used for, by the applicant to go to banks and the lending institutions. The second thing I have requested is that you look into hiring a grant holder. We did this at one point in the city. Eventually, I could repay them a retainer, but it really worked out very well for us. And, you know, the penalty can have to be written into the grant. And I would also like you to consider, especially since we have been using our COVID creativity on so many fronts, it's also considered for lounges with green dragon. And I know that all of the lounges approved don't have this option, but those who have patios and lounges, perhaps asking the state for those who can provide screen and outdoor air protection along with social distancing and approval. I think we're looking at ways to keep our businesses alive and to provide us with the tax revenues that we need. So I thank you for what you have done, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mahia. Our next item is city council and city manager comments and reports. City manager, do you have any additional comments or reports?
Yes, I do. Actually, I'm going to ask Patrick Talarico, our sustainability manager, to come to the podium. He has a presentation, a brief presentation, this is some good news, that Edison is going to be replacing our our streetlights with more energy efficient bulbs, and wanted to let everyone know the good news. Patrick, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and residents at home. I did want to just mention a new program that we're going to be starting here on November 16th. SCE approached us a while back to convert our remaining high-pressure sodium lights to LED lights. These new lights will save us both energy and money over time, and are being installed at no cost to the city. So right off the bat, we're going to be saving $10,000 a year, and these new lights will only use about a third of the electricity as the current lights. As I mentioned, they're going to start work in November 16th. There are about 500 lights that are going to be replaced across the city, and as you can see from this map, the red dots, they're really spread out all over. They haven't told us much more about their plan for installation, but again, they're going to be addressing all of these 500 lights across the city. The new fixtures, this is a picture of the new fixtures, they are only replacing the lights themselves and not the poles, so it should minimize disruption. Each of the lights are dark sky compliant, so they're going to direct light downward. They are also going to be a warm white color, although they will be more white than the traditional lights that we have. They are on the warmer end of that spectrum. This is a picture of the comparison between some old lights and new lights. These aren't our lights, but it just gives you a sense of what the difference may look like. Again, our new lights will be brighter and also more white on the spectrum. If people have any concerns after the lights are installed, they are encouraged to report any issues through our My Palm Springs app. They should go to the Report an Issue page and click on Streets. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Well, thank you so much for that. That's great news. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Patrick. Is that all you have, City David?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Any council members have any reports, updates? Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, we had virtually a very successful League of California Cities meeting that brought together city managers, city staff, and elected members in city council from around California. I was very pleased to participate in a panel discussion where I was able to present a brief history of the contributions of the LGBTQ community to the Renaissance of Palm Springs over the last 25 years. And that was very well received. It was about a 10-minute plug for what's great about Palm Springs and what we have done, and a very particular shout out to Nancy Polly for her help in putting together some financial information that was well received in that presentation. Also, on a personal note, I was elected by the Rivers, our colleagues in Riverside County as the first vice president for the Riverside County Division of the League, and will be in line to become the president next year. So, thank you.
And congratulations, Councilmember Middleton. Anyone else have any reports or updates? Councilman Garner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I also attended the League of Californian Cities, and it was very different to have a virtual event, but very cool to still be able to participate that way. I also wanted to say that we had a fire training for our fire department last week, which many of us got to attend, and I somehow ended up being the only one that actually went inside the house while the fire was burning. So basically, for the public, if you didn't hear about it on the news, there was a house that was donated to the fire department to use for fire training. So fires were set inside the house, and then there was demonstrations on how to put them out, and discussions of where the smoke goes, and how to actually direct your your attention to what was going on. So I got to be in full gear, and if I'm able to share my screen, I can show a few pictures if that's possible. I don't know if it is. No one's telling. Doesn't look like it. I don't have that option. Anyway, we'll have to post some. But it was a really great experience to see our firefighters in action, and to be able to kind of get a better understanding of what it's like to be inside a building when there's a fire. So thank you so much to our fire department for inviting all of us to be there. And I know that fellow council members were there and got to see it from the outside, which is also probably very cool. The other thing I wanted to say is that I've been in discussion with the United Way and many other organizations in our city about different ways to work together to support youth in Palm Springs, and just different options that are available. So there's a lot of things going on kind of behind the scenes to see what we can do together as a community, and kind of connect with people who are already doing youth events and youth programming throughout the valley, so that we're not recreating the wheels. Just wanted to let people know that that's, those things are still happening. And then finally, I just wanted to give a big congratulations to our mayor pro tem, Kristi Holstich. Congratulations on her new baby, Aiden. It hasn't even been a week. We're all just so thrilled for her, and I look forward to having her back, but I do hope that she she enjoys this time with her baby.
Great. That was lovely. Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Councilmember Woods, do you have anything you want to?
No, I just want to repeat that I was there with Councilmember Garner during the fire training, and because of my beard, I wasn't able to go into the fire. I guess it doesn't seal, the thing doesn't seal around your face, so maybe that's why you see firemen with mustaches and no beards. But again, a big shout out to our fellow mayor pro tem on her new baby. I also, I've been in and out of City Hall lately, and there has been a constant line of coming and going of people depositing their ballots for the election. And I really want to thank the people of Palm Springs for being so engaged in voting. If that is any indication of the number of voters that we have, which appears to have increased, and the number of people interested in voting, I give a, an incredible applaud to our residents who are actually participating in the political process. And it appears that it's a very robust participation, just anecdotally from my observation. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Woods. I just have a few things. So one is, we had a meeting of the sort of reopening COVID business task force yesterday, sort of talked about moving into the purple tier, but also talking about how we can continue to work. And we had representatives of our tourism bureau and the Convention and Visitors Bureau to promote people to use our local stores and restaurants, whether if you're going to go out and eat out outside, takeout, delivery, buying gift cards. You know, this is going to be a hard time for the next couple of weeks for our businesses, so to the extent you can focus your shopping locally versus maybe online, or online for local businesses directly, we're going to continue to promote local businesses, and make sure our businesses, many of which are one of a kind and unique and don't exist anywhere else, continue to survive throughout this. They provide jobs for our community, and it's what makes Palm Springs such a special place. There was the monthly meeting of Desert Community Energy this week, and Mr. Friedman, who chairs the Citizens Advisory Committee, covered a lot of it, but I did want to highlight a few things. We are in the process of putting an easy rate comparison for people, so they can see the various options, both Edison's and DCE's on the website. If people have questions on their bills, there have been some, especially because August was the hottest on record, and Edison raised their rates 25%, and our rates are pegged to theirs. But fortunately, because there's no profit incentive, we were able to continue to keep our Desert Community Saver less expensive than Edison's base rate, our carbon free less than Edison's carbon free, and our carbon free at only 2.5% above Edison's base rate that is not carbon free. So we're very consistent, but we have been able to continue to keep our rates as they are. But we will have this new thing on the website, hopefully, in the next month or two, and it's very important. Councilmember Middleton, who's the alternate for that, and I met with staff on these issues to make sure that we're continuing to get that information. But if any resident or business in Palm Springs wants a rate comparison, they can reach out directly to DCE, or actually to either myself or Councilmember Middleton, and staff has been providing those for folks who have questions. So I did want to share that as well. And the final thing I wanted to share was the California Preservation Foundation awarded their advocacy award to the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation at a wonderful ceremony. I got to do a short 30-second video and share my appreciation on behalf of all of us in our city for the great work that they do, and particularly, what I think is, for me and many of us, our favorite things is when we get one of their nominations for historic building, because the history and the pictures and the information is just so great. And I encourage our residents to go online to Palm Springs Preservation Foundation to read those, because it really gives you a great information about the history of our city and architecture and preservation. And their work advocating to keep our historic architecture has been tremendous. I want to congratulate them on the support. And with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. So I'm entertaining a motion to accept the consent calendar without items 1N, which has been removed, and item 1L. Okay, motion, Councilmember Woods, second, Councilmember Garner.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kors.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. So now go to item 1L, Letter of Support for California Community Joyce Associations Request for Changes to the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment. And I don't know if we need a staff report on this, I just wanted to share this is something that Desert Community Energy passed unanimously with Cathedral City, Palm Springs, and Palm Desert voting in support of this. And I mostly want to share it to let the community know that we're working at Desert Community Energy with it, with similar public entities throughout the state to be advocating to the California Public Utilities Commission, to make sure that rates are kept stable and fair with the for-profit utilities, and that we've been working on that. And to invite people, our board meetings are every month, and you can go to desertcommunityenergy.org and get all the information. Several people in our community are always on those board meetings and have the opportunity to speak, and if anyone has questions, can always reach out to me directly. So I just wanted to share that, and if there's no questions, then we'll have a motion. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Woods, second by Councilmember Garner.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Garner.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor Kors.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. The next item is a public hearing. It's item 2A, Consideration of an Action Taken by the Planning Commission to Deny a Conditional Use Permit Application by Jerry G. Johnson on behalf of VIP Motors Cars to Utilize a Portion of a Three-Acre Parcel for Off-Site Vehicle Storage at 4193 East Matthew Drive. Staff reports.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the item that you have before you is a request for a conditional use permit for an off-site auto storage lot, which was denied by the Planning Commission last month. This item has been called forward by a member of city council to reconsider the decision of the Planning Commission. And so with that, I'll go ahead and get started with my presentation, if I could have the PowerPoint, please. So let me just start by discussing- So let me just start by describing briefly the applicant's request. This is a request for an auto storage lot that would be able to store 100 vehicles in Phase One with potentially 50 additional vehicles in Phase Two that will service the three dealerships that are located on Highway 111. The applicant has a five-year agreement for the use of the property with the property owner, and it does allow for two five-year extensions. The unique thing about this case, one of several unique things about this case, is that the rear portion of the property is currently occupied by a single-family residence. And I'll get into the relationships between existing uses and the proposed use in just a moment. In looking at the proposed site plan that was submitted by the applicant, you can see the area in gray here at the front of the property on Matthew Drive is where the vehicles will be stored. The applicant will be doing a landscape buffer at the front of the property on Matthew Drive, which will assist in screening the property. And then the single-family residence is back at the rear of the property here, up against the toe of slope of the mountain behind it. In terms of the location of the auto storage lot, you can see here in the lower right of the image is where the lot would be located on Matthew Drive. And then up at the upper left of the image is the dealerships that the auto storage lot would service. And so the idea is that new vehicles would be stored on the auto storage lot. And then as spaces became available at the dealerships, they would then be moved to the dealerships. In terms of the surrounding uses, as I had indicated, this is kind of a unique parcel in a unique area. So looking at the uses immediately adjacent to the auto storage lot, as I've already indicated, there is a single-family residence at the rear of the property. It's immediately adjacent to a metal fabricator. And then there's also an auto repair specializing in collision damage. And then also to the east is another light industrial building. And so you have a number of industrial uses that are located immediately west of the proposed site. To the north is a multifamily residential complex. And then to the northwest is a retail building with a number of shops. There's a mobile home park in the area to the west, further to the west of Cherokee Way. And then, of course, as I've already mentioned, the auto dealerships on Highway 111, and then a number of retail buildings also on Highway 111. So as you'll see from this image, there's quite a mixture of different uses, everything from mobile homes, apartments, to industrial uses. And so there isn't really a clear distinction between the residential and the commercial uses. This pattern is also clear as we begin to look at the general plan designations and the zoning of the area. The image on the left shows the general plan designations. And remember that the general plan is the foundation for zoning decisions. So in terms of the subject property, which is highlighted by the black dotted line, it is designated NCC or Neighborhood Community Commercial. And I'll go into a little bit more detail in terms of what that allows. But essentially, it is a commercial designation and is most closely aligned with the city's C1 Limited Commercial District. The properties immediately to the west, the industrial properties, also have a general plan designation of NCC Neighborhood Community Commercial. To the north of the site, the apartment complex and the retail have a general plan designation of mixed use, which allows for a mixture of both residential and commercial uses. It's interesting to note, the property immediately to the east of the subject site is designated as medium-density residential. However, that parcel is owned by Riverside County Flood Control and is intended for flood control purposes. So we don't anticipate seeing any multifamily residential on that parcel. In looking at the zoning, the zoning isn't quite aligned with the general plan. So the subject site is zoned R2, which is not consistent with the Neighborhood Community Commercial General Plan designation. The parcels immediately to the west have a zoning designation of CEM, which is Commercial Industrial. To the north, you have R3 and also C2 zoning. And so again, there are some inconsistencies between the general plan and the zoning, just as there are some interesting relationships between the different uses there in the area. As we talk about the general plan being the foundation for any zoning actions that we contemplate, looking at the Neighborhood Community Commercial language in the general plan, it's described as convenience commercial uses being appropriate in that district to serve adjacent residential neighborhoods. As I've already mentioned, it's generally consistent with the C1 zoning. And other areas of the city that have NCC designation are typically zoned C1. So it's intended for commercial uses. As I've mentioned, the subject site is zoned R2, which is a multifamily residential zone. However, in the zoning code, it does allow off-site parking areas by approval of a conditional use permit, provided those parking areas are within 150 feet of a commercial zone. And so based on the language in the zoning code, the applicant has filed a conditional use permit, and staff has determined that the auto storage lot is similar to the off-site parking that's allowed under the R2 zone. In terms of staff findings, again, this is not something that's rather straightforward. There's some unusual aspects of this case. As I've already mentioned, there's the inconsistency of the zoning with the general plan. The general plan is the foundation, which does allow commercial uses. The R2 zone does allow off-site parking. And so staff had made a determination that the auto storage was similar in nature to the off-site parking use. And so that would be allowed in the R2 zone by a conditional use permit, and that it's generally consistent with the adjacent industrial and retail uses. Now, we do acknowledge, again, that there are some challenges. We do have the single-family residence on the property. We have the apartment complex across the street. But as we look at the general plan and the zoning, there is a basis for approval of the proposed use. When the Planning Commission considered this case, they took into consideration the general plan, the zoning, the application request, and the public input that was provided. The Planning Commission had a different read on both consistency with the general plan and the zoning than did staff. They ultimately voted five to one to deny the use, and there were two primary findings that they made. The first was that the use was not consistent with the intent of the Neighborhood Community Commercial General Plan designation. And here's where they felt that there was an issue, is that in the description of Neighborhood Community Commercial, it talks about convenience commercial uses that serve adjacent residential. And they had a difficult time in trying to justify an auto storage lot as being a commercial or a convenience commercial use that serves the area residences. The second issue that they had was our interpretation of auto storage and off-site parking as being synonymous. They didn't find that those uses were the same. And so consequently, based on those findings, they voted five to one to deny the use. They also identified some other concerns in terms of the impacts to the adjacent existing residential uses, both the single-family residential use, although the single-family residential property owner is the one who has authorized this use on their parcel. They also had some concerns with the relationship to the apartments across the street and proposed impacts that might occur because of the traffic in driving the new vehicles back and forth to the dealerships. And so for that reason, the Planning Commission denied the proposed use. So again, to summarize, this is a request for an auto vehicle storage lot. Planning staff found that the use was consistent with the general plan and the zoning based on how we've interpreted the general plan and the Neighborhood Community Commercial District and the zone districts that are compatible with it, and we had recommended approval. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation to you. We have the applicant here who will also make a presentation to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this application.
Great. Thank you, Director Fag. Before we open the public hearing, does anyone have any questions of staff? Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Flynn, I just have one question. I appreciate how difficult this was for the Planning Commission and that we're dealing with some gray areas of law here. But I simply want to reconfirm that you are convinced that the use that the VIP Motors would like to make of this property is, in fact, a permissible use.
Yes, that is correct. And the reason why I say that it is permissible is, again, we find that the auto storage use is equivalent to the off-site parking use that's allowed in the R2 zone, which is the zoning that is in place on the property. And we find it to be generally consistent with the general plan designation.
Thank you. That's all of my questions. I'll have comments when it's time.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner.
Actually, I really have more comments, I think. I'll wait.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Woods.
Flynn, I see on page three of the conditions of approval, planning condition PL10 requiring a parking lease agreement. Can you just explain what that is and why it's required?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question? I was having a hard time hearing you.
Well, I'm sorry. Condition PLN, planning 10, requires a parking lease agreement. Could you just explain what that is? A license agreement, not lease, a parking license agreement on page 21 of the packet and page three of the conditions of approval.
Okay.
A parking license agreement. I just didn't know what that was.
So it's a little bit different instrument than what we typically see in terms of a rental agreement or something along those lines. The property owner has agreed to allow the applicant to use the property under a parking license agreement per their discussions with their attorney. The reason that we have this as a condition of approval is, in order to allow this use to proceed, there needs to be some type of agreement between the property owner and the applicant. We are just confirming in the conditions of approval that a parking license agreement must be in place, signed by the property owner and the applicant, as a way to more or less allow this conditional use permit.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to present their case. If requested, the applicant will have two additional minutes at the end for rebuttal, and the public is invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. City Clerk, if we can open the public hearing and have the applicant present.
Good evening, Mayor Kors and City Council and City Manager Reddy and city staff. Thank you, guys, for agreeing to hear our case tonight. It's a, I guess it's good to be unusual. And Director Fag, thank you for pointing that out. This is an unusual case, and I thought I'd give a little bit of a background. And I'd like to say also, thank you for your service to the city. I downloaded the package of information that you guys were provided, and when it was 597 pages, I didn't realize how you guys get through this every council meeting. So I'd like to refer to some information that's in your package, if I can. And it's in regard to our project, and it's the attachment eight. And it starts on page 61 of the, it's attachment eight, and of the package, it's page 61. The Planning Commission did not necessarily know who VIP Motor Cars is because it's a holding company that's been operating at the corner of East Palm Canyon in Cherokee since 1974, as outlined on page 62. Over the course of the past 20 years, we've been very instrumental in the redevelopment of the city. And I say that with pride and with understanding that it's been a wonderful combination of government and private industry that has done that over the past 20 years. But we have developed the Auto Center, which is a very exciting asset to the city. And it is, has included over the years a number of different franchises. Our, I guess our success is our current challenge. We have, as you know, Porsche was added just in the last two years. BMW is currently under renovation. I've just been reviewing plans for renovation of the Hyundai facility that's in the Auto Center. We have a new brand in our portfolio. It's called Genesis, and it's the new luxury brand of the Hyundai franchise, which we were the first dealership in California appointed. And I will just say, we want to continue to grow in the city of Palm Springs. And I think you guys, some of you know that, for the past four years, we've been very active in pursuing options with limited success. I've talked to the adjacent property owner. I've talked to the Indian Alatis for some land that's behind the estate sales furniture and talked to the Bureau of Indian Affairs about that property. I've talked to the Body Shop that's adjacent to the property that we're talking here. I met with Mayor Kors and other members of the Business Retention Subcommittee, you know, seeking wisdom on all fronts, and met with also the economic development staff here at the city as well a number of times, trying to find some room to grow. And it's been frustrating. And we just happened to meet Gary and Suzie Boskovich, who own the property that we're discussing now. Gary's family actually had a dairy distribution business in that area. And something that I've learned, the, that entire property was zoned R2 based on Gary's family desire to develop the property to the east between the current property and Vons. And that was a great idea, but the county exercised eminent domain and took ownership of that property for a flood control and water retention project. So it's a very unusual request, I understand, that to ask for vehicle storage on something zoned R2. But we're at a point where we don't have other options right now. And this seems to be a good, good, good opportunity for us and for the city to solve some, some needs for growth. I'll skip over page 64 because I think that's similar to a page that was shown just earlier. But I did think on page 65 that it's important to see the surrounding areas as Ben's described. The Art District is at the corner of Matthew and Cherokee on the northeast corner there. And there is a parking, you know, sizable parking lot there. There's a sizable parking lot on the Body Shop that's directly west of the proposed project site, and then the Light Industrial, which was described earlier as well. If you turn to page 66, you can see another overhead view a little closer than we looked at earlier that shows the Body Shop and Metal Fabrication Shop. They're directly adjacent to the property we're talking about. Page 67, another shot of the same area. And then page 68 shows what's going to be the water retention project. And I've seen the diagram of that. It's a, it's a big, big project. And in fact, they're going to, the reason our project's divided into two phases is because they're going to use part of the eastern side of this property for access during the construction of the water retention. Then page 69 shows the current state of the property from a street view, which I think is pertinent, on the property directly to the west of this project site. Page 70 is another similar shot of that property. Page 71 shows the Page 71 shows the Art District, which was described as retail in the presentation earlier. And then page, page 72 shows the apartment complex that's directly to the north. Page 73 shows the project site, and you can see there are some, there's already a drive approach and a driveway in here that would be incorporated into our project. And lastly, I'd just like to point out that we do have a landscape plan, which was, was described earlier. And on the summary on page 76, this is an unusual request. We acknowledge that. Our desire is to grow within the city, and this is a property that we've identified after four years of searching to accomplish our goal of continuing to do business and grow within the city of Palm Springs. So we respectfully request that the City Council approve our conditional use permit. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
City Clerk, do we have a public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one. If you'll just give me a second. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to try one more time. Mr. Mayor, I've attempted to reach Brad Anderson twice. He is not answering the phone.
Okay, thank you very much.
Otherwise, that concludes public comment.
Okay. So we will close the public hearing and open up for Councilmember comments or questions. And remember, the applicant is in the chambers. If you have questions for the applicant, and Planning Commission Chair Wormarak is available by phone if we have questions for her. Anyone have any questions or comments? Councilmember Garner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that we received from the public was a letter from the Rimrock Neighborhood Organization. And in that letter, they listed quite a few things that I'm, I'd like to know what our options are there. For instance, they said that there's a school bus that picks up children right on the corner of Linden and Matthew. And they also mentioned the test driving of vehicles on Matthew Drive. And when you look at that area, there's limited sidewalks. The sidewalks will stop at Linden, and then if you keep going on Matthew Drive, you eventually get to Vons', the grocery store. But there's no sidewalks there. And if you go out to Palm Canyon, there's also no sidewalks unless you cross all the way to the other side of Palm Canyon, and then you have to cross back. So what I'm curious about is, is one, if there, if we can add as a condition of approval, if we were to approve this, that there be crosswalks installed in that area where there's a school bus, that there's signs put up indicating that it is indeed a school bus stop so that people are aware. And then is it, would the applicant be, be willing to not allow test driving on this street that is, does have a curve and where we're told that a lot of residents use to walk to the grocery store because there's not really any good way to walk to the grocery store because of the lack of sidewalks on both Palm Canyon and on Matthew Drive, but at least Matthew Drive is, you know, has less traffic.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and address the questions raised by Councilmember Garner. In terms of looking at crosswalks, obviously, school safety and the safety of schoolchildren is very important to the city staff. We could certainly work with the city engineer in looking at ways that we might improve the safety of that school bus stop, including the use of crosswalks where it may be appropriate to do so. One of the things that will assist with pedestrian safety in that area is we do have the Canyon View Development that is just to the east on Matthew Drive, which will include sidewalks at the perimeter of the property, which will assist residents from both the Mobile Home Park and the apartments in walking safely to the shopping center there further to the east. So to a certain degree, that will be addressed by the new development that's coming forward. But we can look and work with the city engineer on crosswalks. Sinage as part of that is certainly something that we can do. In terms of using Matthew Drive as a route for test driving cars, we can do a condition of approval here with VIP Motors, that they agree not to test drive vehicles on Matthew Drive. However, that would only apply to the VIP motor car dealerships. The Indigo dealerships, which is the Porsche dealership and the BMW dealership, the condition would not apply to them. One of the other things that we can look at, if, again, it's the concern about speed on Matthew Drive, under our traffic calming program that the Engineering Division has, we can look at things that may be appropriate, such as speed humps as a way to slow vehicles down, and again, to enhance pedestrian safety. So there are options available if those were to be included as conditions of approval.
Thank you so much, Flynn. That's, that's really helpful. I mean, overall, considering that the, the owner of the house on that property approves of this project, and the kind of beautification and things that are being done, you know, I'm leaning towards approval, but I, but I really want to make sure that we're addressing the safety concerns of, of the residents in that area. And I think that it's very important that we're thinking about that, especially because there's apartments and Mobile Home Park, and we are, we do know that there's some low-income residents who don't have vehicles who are using that street. And I don't like walking on Palm Canyon in that stretch of town either. Even on the sidewalk, it's, it's just a lot of traffic. So I completely understand why Matthew Drive would be used instead. So I'd love to hear what everyone else thinks, but that's, that's kind of my thoughts at the moment.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Anyone else? Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Garner, for bringing up the safety concerns of the neighborhood. I think those are very, very important, and I support adding crosswalks and potentially speed bumps in order to, to create a safer place. I am always hate to go against a decision of the Planning Commission, and I can appreciate the difficulty that the Planning Commission had in reviewing this matter, because it is something that's a little bit different. But I think VIP Motors has made, is using this property in an exceptionally good way. And it's something that not only they need, but we need more of auto dealerships in our community. It's a shame that we lost some of our historic auto dealerships to our friends in Cathedral City. And as we look at trying to diversify our economy, I think trying to bring back some of the dealerships that we've lost over time is something that, that we should be attempting to do. And this is a good step in, in that direction. As I look at this broad area between the auto dealerships and the Rimrock Shopping Center, I think there are areas there that, as we look at the general plan, are perhaps some of the best property in Palm Springs for the use of expansion of auto dealerships. So I'm going to support this because I think it's a step in the right direction, and we can do so in a safe fashion.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods.
If I could ask the applicant, if the applicant is still in the room, a question. Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
So, do you want to come to the mic? Thank you. Thank you for your business in Palm Springs, by the way. I very much appreciate that. I think you've heard a couple of comments of somebody, of our council, fellow councilmembers looking to put in some traffic calming on Matthew. Would you be amenable to that if we added that as a condition of approval?
Well, I, I fully support safety, especially for our children, and that's my first comment. Secondly, that seems to be an issue secondary to this particular use of the property. This will be a very low volume use. We may move, I hope we sell a lot of Mercedes-Benz cars and need to move two or three a day, or four or five a day, or 10 or 12 a day. But it's likely going to be three or four cars a day visiting to that site. I don't think we could find a lower-impact project for that area than this project that's been presented. So I, I would say I, I support those types of measures. I would prefer they not be a condition to my project when others will also, you know, be restricted and benefit from, from that particular application.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I, sorry, there was feedback. I agree with Councilmember Middleton that it's always hard to go against the Planning Commission's decision, because I think they weigh the facts very, very carefully, and it's, it's very tough. However, the good thing about this is that it is a conditional use permit, and if, if the applicant were to violate any of the conditions in the conditional use permit, we have the right to revoke a conditional use permit, which would revoke the use of this particular property. I've also had the opportunity to look at the conditions of approval, and there's several very good conditions of approval in here to ensure that there's no impact on the adjacent area, which is, you know, no maintenance can be done at the site, only employees of VIP Motors can be at the site, et cetera. So I would agree with my fellow councilmembers that I would support this project because there are good conditions in here and because it is a conditional use permit, with the right to revoke if they, if the applicant does not live up to the conditions.
Great, thank you. So Director Fag, if I can ask you, because I think we're all obviously concerned on the safety factor, what your thoughts are if this is only being used, you know, to move cars three or four times a day? That's something that should be a condition on the applicant? Is it should be something the city would do if the need was there, given their use, if it is as they expect, is sort of minimal? What do you suggest we do?
Well, there's a couple of different options for you. Generally, things such as signage and crosswalks, the cost is fairly minimal in terms of doing those. Once we get into doing speed humps and things like that, there, there is an increased cost there associated with those improvements. I, I think based on the testimony that the applicant has given in terms of the number of vehicles that they will be moving each day, speed humps may be a bit much at this point in time. But what I would like to look at is the items that Councilmember Garner raised relative to safety at the school bus stop, crosswalks, and making sure that pedestrians are safe as they walk along Matthew Way. And so what I might recommend is, as a condition of approval, that the city engineer shall review the conditions of the site and make improvements relative to pedestrian safety that include signage for the school bus stop, crosswalks, and signage for pedestrians as may be appropriate, or something along those lines. And again, I think the cost should be relatively minimal. If we do find later that there are concerns about speed of traffic on Matthew Drive or the volume of traffic, we can revisit the conditional use permit in the future. What we have done at other times is we put a 12-month review by either the Planning Commission or the City Council on a conditional use permit. So that way, it gives you the opportunity to hear from residents to see if there are concerns at that point in time. So number one, I'd recommend that we add a general condition relative to pedestrian safeway, safety improvements by the city engineer as recommended by the city engineer. And number two, we might review the conditional use permit in either 12 months or 24 months to verify if there's any additional safety improvements that are necessary.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner.
I really appreciate that. I think that, that really, that works for me and addresses my concerns. And I just wanted to thank the Rimrock Neighborhood Organization for bringing these issues to our attention, because it sounds like we probably should have had some of these safety measures in place already. So thank you for, for your advocacy for your neighborhood.
Great, thank you. Director Fag, so those, the costs for signage and crosswalks, those would be city-born or the applicant?
You can do it either way. They could either be borne by the applicant or by the city.
You say they're minimal. Can you give us a sense? Just because if these are existing issues, I think, you know, it seems more appropriate they come onto the city and not onto a business. And then if the business starts utilizing the road in a way different than what we're hearing, then we could look at, you know, that when we revisit it at some point in the future.
Yeah. I've asked Mr. Joel Montalvo, the city engineer, to come forward. Mr. Montalvo, if you could just talk about the cost for signage at the school bus stop, cost for crosswalks, and other pedestrian safety improvements.
Sure. The costs are, like you say, relatively minimal. Sinage and striping, I would say, under $2,000 to $3,000, $5,000, no more than $5,000 to do the improvements at, in that area.
Okay. I think given that and given the businesses' commitment to Palm Springs, my recommendation is we cover those because they need to be happening regardless of whether we approve this, it sounds like. Unless, is everyone good with that? Okay. And I also want to thank the neighborhood for raising this, and the applicant, who did come to, Mayor Protom Holstich and I, to talk about just options for how they stay in Palm Springs before this lot was even in question, and it's really been working to find a location for car storage for that purpose. So I really appreciate that. Appreciate the Planning Commission. As I read this, I could see why people would have been, you know, could go either way on this, given the way our general plan and our zoning reads. But I tend to agree with the planning director's expertise, although I absolutely understand the other position as well. So anyone have anything else? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve as outlined by the director.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Middleton, second by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Aye.
Mayor Coors.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Great, thank you. The next item is 2B, review of a request by Tower Energy Group for construction of a grocery store and accompanying fueling station located at 3299 North Indian Canyon Drive. No testimony will be taken on this matter tonight. Is there a motion to continue this matter to the City Council meeting of November 12, 2020?
I'll move to, move to, yeah, to move that item.
That's good. Motion by Councilmember Garner, second by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Coors.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Our next item is 3A, consideration of introducing an ordinance establishing a mandatory commercial solid waste and organic waste recycling requirement for certain businesses and multiple family residential dwellings. Staff report, please. Staff report, please.
Uh, thank you, uh, mayor and city council. Uh, you have before you a, an ordinance to implement the state requirements associated with, um, mandatory recycling and organics management, um, for certain businesses. This, uh, ordinance, uh, would affect, um, businesses and, commercial businesses and multifamily residential units with five or more units. Um, and it also basically just codifies existing state requirements. There are no new or different requirements that we are imposing at the local level. Uh, although it is not required for the city to have an ordinance, it is highly, it was highly recommended by our state contacts because as we know, uh, some businesses just won't comply until they know that they're going to be, uh, fined. And we can't do any enforcement of state requirements unless we have a code on our books to do so. Uh, the other important thing that this ordinance provides is really a stepping stone to the more significant requirements that will be coming down the road in 2022, uh, with implementation of SB 1383. So the ordinance includes, uh, several requirements. Businesses that generate more than four cubic yards of solid waste per week must subscribe to a recycling service. This requirement has been in place for a while and we have pretty good, um, compliance rates for that particular element of the requirement. Um, we also have a requirement here that, for businesses that generate more than two cubic yards of solid waste per week, that they must subscribe to organics management services. And the state recently lowered the, the threshold from four cubic yards, similar to the recycling requirement, down to two cubic yards, um, because they are placing, um, significantly more emphasis these days on organics management and keeping organics out of landfills. And they felt that by lowering that threshold, they would be able to capture more organics, um, and prevent them from getting to a landfill. Um, uh, businesses are also required to maintain containers on sites and, on site and source separate materials. Um, and, uh, they are also required to have in-house recycling and composting containers for, um, businesses that manage, that allow customers to manage their own waste from items that they consume on site. And that is also a new, fairly new requirement that was imposed in 2019. Uh, there are some exceptions in the, in the ordinance. Businesses are allowed to self-haul, so they can, uh, do this on their own if they meet certain requirements. Very few businesses do that. Um, there is also an exemption for very small quantity generators of organics, so if they only, uh, generate a half a cubic yard of organics per week, they are not required to meet the organics requirements. And then, uh, space limitations. So, uh, the state recognizes that some businesses may not be able to do this due to space limitations and so there are, uh, exceptions that can be made for that as well. The city and, uh, works with Palm Springs Disposal Services to assess, um, these exemption opportunities, uh, and we are currently in the process of doing that, uh, again, for the current businesses, as well as looking ahead to the new businesses that, um, fall into that two cubic yard threshold. There is an enforcement component to this, of course. Um, we have an initial notification and that allows 60 days for businesses to comply, mostly because it's not an immediate fix. Uh, there is, uh, some effort in getting the containers to the businesses and training staff and making sure that they, um, have, uh, are set up inside, uh, so that they can, uh, generate and manage their waste outside. Uh, the citation amounts include $100 for the first violation, $200 for the second, $500 for the third, and a $1,000 misdemeanor fine. Um, and these would be imposed after that 60-day period. And that's all I have for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have and we have, uh, Chris Cunningham from Palm Springs Disposal Services with us to answer any questions, uh, that you may have of them.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Woods?
Uh, thank you, Pedro. Can you tell me, um, enforcement is going to be done through code compliance or through another arm of government?
So enforcement would be done through code compliance, um, but we would be relying heavily on, uh, Palm Springs Disposal Services to kind of assist us in that process and notifying us of problems.
Okay. And the violation fine, how were they developed or designed? They seem relatively, they don't seem to really push a person in the right direction. They seem a little bit low on this, the monetary amount.
Well, the first one is a little bit lower than they would pay for their monthly service, but then they increase fairly substantially and they can be fined each day. So, um, they only get that 60-day notification, uh, for the first, um, violation and so then those fines start to rack up daily after that.
Okay, great. And then for, let's say, an apartment complex, a multifamily unit that needs to retrofit, does Palm Springs Disposal have a way to work with those apartment complex owners to retrofit the project to be able to do organics?
Uh, yeah, so we know that, um, multifamily is going to be one of our challenging situations and, um, I'll let Chris maybe explain how that works in some cases.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, yeah, multifamily complexes, uh, Palm Springs in general, there's a lot of space constraints here. The organics for multifamily are, are not limited to food waste. They don't have to do the food waste. It's only green material or landscape waste. Most of these places have the, um, contracted landscapers who take that material away. If that's the case, then they're in compliance with the law. They don't have to move food waste or anything like that. If they need room for recycling, there hasn't been a place that I haven't been able to figure out to this point, but we'll always be able to figure something out, whether it's carts, smaller containers, things like that. So yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I would just add to that, um, response that, uh, I've also spoken to our planning, uh, department and where there are space limitations that are created because the complex has to have a certain number of parking spaces, we're going to work with planning to take over a parking space if we need to do that in certain, certain circumstances.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, well, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Middleton.
I just want to congratulate staff and, uh, Palm Springs Disposal for the work that they've done, uh, in, uh, this and I think it's something that we should move forward with.
Yeah, I agree. So, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Middleton?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Woods?
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember Garner?
Aye.
Mayor Kors?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes four to zero and this is an ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending chapter 6.04 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to mandatory commercial solid waste and organic waste recycling.
Great, thank you. Our next item is 5A, a request by Willie Holland of Holland Farms for administrative minor modification approval for relief from the 500-foot minimum separation distance requirement between cannabis dispensaries and cannabis lounges for proposed dispensary at 150 North Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the item before you is a request for a distance waiver for a proposed cannabis dispensary that will be located on North Palm Canyon Drive. It is approximately 350 feet away from an adjacent dispensary. In terms of the application, the dispensary will be approximately 1,300 square feet. It's going to be located within a Class 1 historic building. The applicant is not proposing any significant modifications to the building and, uh, it should also be noted that any proposed signage would need to be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Advisory Committee and be consistent with the sign program that has been approved by the Historic Site Preservation Board. In terms of the dispensary, the images show the location of the dispensary within the former Bank of America building. Again, the tenant space is approximately 1,350 square feet in area with storefront windows on North Palm Canyon Drive. In terms of the separation distance from an adjacent dispensary, the nearest dispensary is the OG Arabian Nights dispensary, which as I had mentioned, is approximately 350 feet away, uh, just to the north on North Palm Canyon Drive. Uh, it's located in the block that is to the north of Andreas Road, uh, which separates the two blocks. The, uh, distance waiver findings for a minor modification are as follows. Relative to conformance to the zoning code and the general plan, uh, the use is allowed by the zoning code. As we mentioned in our staff report, uh, it may conflict with the general plan goal for a balance of uses in that we would have two cannabis dispensaries within 500 feet of each other. Uh, relative to impacts to neighboring properties, this generally will not have impacts to neighboring properties. Uh, one of the things that we should note is that this proposed dispensary will have later operating hours than the adjacent retail uses. The applicant indicates that they'll be open to 10:00 PM. Most of the adjacent retail businesses close earlier than that. In terms of impacts to general health, safety, and welfare, adherence to our operational procedures in chapter 5 of the municipal code will help to protect public health and safety. Uh, there are no unique site features which would warrant approval of this modification, however. In terms of the additional optional criteria that the city council has reasonably, recently approved, uh, the property is not blighted, as that term is defined in our code. Relative to the tenant space being a viable tenant space, uh, the last retail tenant was there through the beginning of 2019. There has not been a tenant in the space since early 2019. Relative to concentration, as I've indicated, the nearest adjacent dispensary is on the block to the north, so they are not in the same block, but again, they are 350 feet away from each other. And then finally, one of the other criterion is relative to participation in the social equity program. As is noted in the backup materials, the applicant is a qualified participant and so would qualify under that particular finding. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Uh, great, you, great, thank you, Director Fag. Do you have any questions or comments? We can do them all together as this is not a public hearing. Councilmember Middleton?
Okay. A question for the director. This property is, uh, within, uh, the larger, uh, complex of buildings that constitute the Town and Country Center. Uh, is the, uh, use that will be made here, uh, consistent with preservation of, uh, the Town and Country Center?
As I had indicated, the applicant isn't proposing any modifications to the storefront and that is one of the important aspects of its Class 1 designation, is retaining the character-defining features of the buildings that make up the complex. So again, if there are not any significant changes to the storefront, then the use is appropriate with the historic designation that is granted. There is nothing in the historic designation that would prevent a cannabis use in specificity.
Thank you. Uh, I think it's well-known that, uh, I've been pretty reluctant to, uh, grant, uh, waiver, uh, requests. So I'm going to be breaking with my tradition, uh, in, uh, voting to approve this one and, uh, that is, uh, very significantly because, uh, Mr. Holland is coming forward as, uh, a life, essentially a lifelong resident of Palm Springs and someone who's participating in the social equity program. Uh, I think it is, the social equity program is just an outstanding example of what we should be doing and encouraging. Uh, I hope that, uh, as we start to move forward, we look for other opportunities for individuals who, uh, may have been, uh, involved, uh, sometimes in minor crimes, sometimes in, in other crimes, to be able to re-enter our society and become, uh, successful within the business sphere. So, uh, I congratulate, uh, Mr. Holland on what he plans to do. Uh, the one request I will make of him is, uh, that he do, uh, his very best to hire local people, uh, from the community to work in, uh, this, uh, store.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. Uh, I agree with Councilmember Middleton and I also am one that is not in favor of waivers often, um, but I completely agree, this is a, a great person to, and company to give a waiver to. I also want to point out that this is a storefront right on Palm Canyon, right on, on intersection of Taquitz almost. And, and that's really significant as well when we're looking at social equity applicants. So often, um, you know, people of color and are, are, have to get properties that are further away from the main area of town because there aren't as many opportunities available. Um, and so this is a really, uh, amazing opportunity, I think, uh, for Willie Holland and his company to grow and I think a great opportunity for Palm Springs to, to support somebody that is, uh, a lifelong resident. So I'm, I'm very excited for this project to see where it goes and, um, I, I definitely, um, support the waiver.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods?
Um, I have, uh, a question of Director Fag. Um, this process that we're going through with the distance waiver, they still goes through planning commission, is that correct?
Uh, no, the distance waiver application process goes directly to the city council. The planning commission does not review requests for distance waivers.
Okay, let me, let me reframe my question, I'm sorry. Um, if we approve the distance waiver, does it go back to planning commission in regards to approval of the use at this particular site?
No, it does not. The cannabis dispensary use does not require a conditional use permit and so consequently there is no need for the planning commission to review it. The only additional review that's required, our code does require the Architectural Advisory Committee to review and recommend approval of any changes to the exterior of the building, uh, which city council then approves and then Architectural Advisor Committee also must approve the signage for the dispensaries and lounges and other cannabis businesses.
Thank you. So a question I would have, and I'm looking at, I believe, his other location, is that, um, this part of Palm Canyon is a very pedestrian-friendly and the interaction between the pedestrian and the storefront window is incredibly important to maintain that vibrancy that we have on Palm Canyon Drive. So part of that is like, if you just think of the old times, when you saw the cobbler in the front window or you saw the cook in the front window or the candy maker displaying their wares in the front window, you could look into the, the, the storefront itself and you saw something that was inviting to come into. Um, what we've seen with a lot of our cannabis is they, they block off that visual look between the pedestrian and the interior of the actual business. Um, um, and I don't know, is that something we want here? Can we in any way, or is there any ordinances we already have or regulations to ensure that we continue that kind of visual sightline between the pedestrian and the inside of the store?
Uh, yes, the city council has been very specific in previous actions relative to blackening out windows in pedestrian areas and so staff has been very mindful of that and that's one of the reasons why we have the architectural review process in place. If the applicant were to propose using some type of opaque, uh, feature on the front windows, uh, number one, we would discourage that and number two, we would require them to go through an architectural review process that would eventually come to the city council. For a dispensary, unlike a lounge facility, they can have clear windows. You can see into the retail space from the street. Uh, and so again, we are encouraging that in this particular instance. If this were a lounge, what we would look for is some type of an anti-room, or, sorry, ante-room, um, so that they would still have, uh, clear glass windows in the front, but the lounge space itself would be, need to be set off. Uh, in this instance, they're not proposing a lounge, so they are expected to have clear glass windows at the street front.
Thank you. I want to, Mayor, my comments of Councilmember Middleton and Councilmember Garner, that there are some special features with this particular one that I, I think are worthy of us approving. I also think it adds to the mix in the area, and might even enliven the area from what it currently is, so I would also be approving this distance waiver.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I won't repeat what's been said, but I do want to also support this. I want to, Mr. Holland, you know, has reached out throughout this process, talking to, it's Goodheart on our staff, finds him really great to work with. We like applicants who work really well with us and want to come to solutions. I do want to note something the former mayor, Ron Oden, said, and it was a conversation I had with him when he raised this to me. It's really to reach out to the state about still some challenges in how we can move these faster, because if someone burns through some of the benefits of the program waiting because of how this program is set up at the state level, it adds some hardship and makes it harder for some of these to move through. So I'm going to reach out to Councilmember Garner as the other liaison to cannabis, and think about how we can reach, you know, out to some of our representatives at state level. You know, this is a new program, everyone's learning from it, but we're really fortunate and really want to thank Veronica Goodheart for her work in getting us into this, and really excited, I think she said that Mr. Holland is the poster child for how this should work, so very excited to support this as well. And with that, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the waiver.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Garner, seconded by everyone, Councilmember Woods, I think.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kors.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Great, thank you. Our next item is 5B, consideration of awarding a construction contract to John Dean Technologies Corporation in the amount of $7,42,945 for the airport passenger boarding bridges. Staff report, and I think.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Garner, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I need to recuse for this purposes.
Yes, Aaron, if you can put Councilmember Garner in a room. Oh, quick, okay. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a good progress story for the airport. Our passenger loading bridges, you know, been in service for some time, this is actually purchasing new, new bridges. This is certainly a major capital project. It's fully funded with FAA grant funds, and so what's before you this evening is moving that project forward. There is a long lead time to order these bridges, so you want to get moving so we're able to have these in for next season's airport traffic. That being said, Ulysses Squire, our acting airport director, is here and other staff. If you have any questions, we are here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Woods.
Thank you. I think it's really important as we continue to strengthen our position as a world-class resort destination to have an airport that actually offers amenities for people of all abilities, including handicap people, and these bridges are important for a variety of reasons, including sometimes our extreme weather, the heat in particular, versus walking on a tarmac and needing assistance. So I'm in favor of getting new bridges and of this contract to bring us to fruition, those bridges.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
I will second what Councilmember Woods had to say. I think this is an important project for us to move forward, and I appreciate all of the firms that provided bids and all of the work that our staff did in the evaluation of these bids, and it's, it is time for us to move forward so that we can get this work done and completed before, sometime next year, when we hope we will see individuals being able to travel to and from our city far more frequently than they can in current COVID environment.
Great, thank you, and I echo those comments and the importance of these, and also really want to commend staff for the work in getting this fully funded by the federal government, so there are no city dollars going to this, and will be a great benefit, and as we see more airlines come in, it's even more important that we get this done. So with that, is there a motion?
So moved, staff recommendation. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Woods, seconded by Councilmember Middleton.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kors.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
She's.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Garner is recused. Motion passes three to zero.
And Aaron, if you could let Grace back in. Now, we are quick.
Good timing.
Welcome back, okay. Our next item is 5C, approved refinancing of lease revenue bonds, Series 2012B, and authorized acceptance of refinancing proposal from Capital One Public Finance LLC. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I would just like to note on this item, given where we are with the budget in our COVID crisis, we were looking for ways to find additional areas of resources, and I would just like to note that joining us on Zoom is Suzanne Harrell, who's been our financial and bond advisor for some time, so Aaron, if you can please allow her to join, she'll be able to answer any specific questions you have. And at this point, I think the staff report outlines the savings we would accrue, and I would like Assistant City Manager, Mr. Fuller, to explain the specifics of the two, and our finance director, Ms. Pauli, is here to address questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council, as noted in the staff report, we coordinate constantly with our financial advisor to evaluate our current debt and always look for ways to refinance, given continued movement with lower interest rates, and so for you tonight is to approve moving forward with refinancing two major debts that we currently have. The first one being the debt that we issued for the downtown project through the Measure J Fund. As noted, that is a debt service that expires in 2035, and in accordance with our city debt policy, as long as a refinancing of that debt is going to realize savings of at least 4%, we would bring that forward to your attention, and that's what we're doing today. The option that's presented actually would provide for savings of 3.6 million, and we're recommending that the structure of this refinancing reduce what would have been our typical debt service payments in the next two fiscal years by a significant amount, so that a majority of those savings would occur in this fiscal year and the following fiscal year with modest savings through the remainder of the debt service term. So again, that would result in savings of 3.6 million to the Measure J Fund. The other financing is a lease financing that was established for the portfolio of energy management projects that we completed several years ago, and that one was brought forward by Capital, by Capital Finance, and essentially they're willing to lower the financing terms, which will generate savings that's identified in the staff report of 1.4 million over the remainder term of that debt financing, and that again will accrue to, to the city and is a benefit. So Suzanne Harrell has more specifics if you want to get in the weeds on the financing details, but we do recommend your approval. Tonight, there's a term sheet that's required to be signed by the city manager by tomorrow to get to Capital Finance, and then following it with your approval tonight, we would move forward on November 12th with the financing documents to do the debt financing on the bonds. With that, Mr. Mayor, that completes my presentation.
And I would note that Ms. Harrell is actually on the call, she's just on, on audio.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments on this? Other than saving money is good. Councilmember Woods.
I agree, saving money is great. Always good to restructure to save money, but I, I read the staff report, Ms. Pauli's staff report, three times to make sure I fully understand it, and I think I understand it pretty well, but I do have a couple of questions. One is, the staff report and the verbal report that was just, the oral report that was just given to us, says that the huge savings are going to be taken upfront in the first two years, and I'm curious why we're taking them there versus the life of it or at the end of it?
Actually, Councilmember Woods, that was a decision that we had made at a staff level, just because given where we are with potentially shortages from COVID and reduced revenue, we thought at this point it would be prudent and actually in our interest to get those savings upfront. Now, there still will be savings over time, but the bulk of them indeed will be upfront. That is a discretion that the council has, it's ultimately your decision, and Ms. Harrell can explain how that would work if we wanted to change it and what those savings would be over time. Suzanne, would you want to address that?
Yes, I just want to make sure that you can hear me.
Yes.
So, good evening, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So we did look at structuring the refinancing of the 2012 bonds three ways. One was to, as the council member mentioned, take an equivalent amount of savings every year over the remaining 14 years. That produces, on a, on a percentage basis, that produces the most savings, and then we looked at extending the maturity, and we also looked at the version that is in the staff report tonight, which is taking the majority of the savings upfront in the, in the first two years in order to, when it, when it makes the most sense for budget purposes because of related COVID revenue losses.
If we were to, Suzanne, thank you, if we were to take it throughout the life of the bond, how much more would we, do you have any idea of how much, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you know how much more we might save than taking it upfront?
I do, I'm just going to pull it up here on my computer. So if you, if we did it over the term of the bonds proportionately, it's about $300,000 of savings a year for the remaining 14 years, and that's a total of 4.1 million dollars or nine, 9.6% savings. The option that's in the staff report is 3.6 million dollars or 8.3% savings with the two, or 3.6 million dollars realized in the first two years and then minimal savings thereafter.
And I would just add to that, if I could, Councilmember, one of the reasons why, another reason for taking the savings upfront is it's very likely these bonds will be refinanced again somewhere between now and 2035, and so in essence, we would have accrued the savings to the city upfront. Thank you.
So the other questions I have are, did we extend the length of time or the maturity date on these bonds by refinancing them, or is that the same?
So actually, the existing bonds have a cash-funded reserve fund that's held by the trustee that typically is used to pay the final payment or the, the final year's debt service on the bond. Because of your credit rating, you don't need to set aside a reserve fund anymore, and so with this financing, we're actually going to reduce the term of the bonds by a year, so that your net payments would be equivalent to your net payments under the existing bonds using that reserve fund as the last payment. I think in the, in the staff report, I think you can see how that's demonstrated in the table where the existing payments go out to 2035, but there's a large credit payment in the last year, so the net payments only go out to 2034, and then the net payments on the new bonds will only go out to 2034.
And there's always a cost to refinance a bond, and just, you know, you always have to weigh those costs against what the savings is. Do you have an idea of what it's costing us to refinance these bonds?
Yes, so first, let me just note that these savings are net of the cost, but the, kind of the fixed cost of issuance should be about $250,000, and that would cover your bond counsel, your municipal advisor, your disclosure counsel. You've got the rating agency will charge a fee, there's some title insurance costs, and then the underwriter will also charge a fee, and that's based on, that, that kind of fluctuates with the size of the bonds.
So we're saving, we're spending about $250,000 to save about 3.6 million dollars, is what I'm understanding.
Yes, it's, well, the, the 250 is the fixed cost, when we add the underrating fee in there, it gets to be about 425 or so.
Okay.
425,000.
Thank you, you've been great. I do, I'm wondering if you can answer one question for the pedestrian in me. Can you just, in very layman's terms, describe what a lease bond is?
So the California Constitution prevents cities from issuing bonds that are secured by the general fund for more than a year, and so as a consequence, in order to do long-term financing, cities have to issue lease revenue bonds, and that is just a way to secure, the city will lease an asset to its financing authority, and the financing authority will lease the asset back to the city, and the lease payments that the city is required to make will be used by the financing authority to secure bond payments to investors. And so that's the way that for the last, you know, 30 years, cities in California have issued long-term debt and complied with the California Constitution.
And does our, does our credit rating, I'll call it, have anything to do with helping us get better rates on this?
Yes, it does. So the higher your credit rating, the lower the interest rate will be, and so what I'm hoping is, based on the information that I've been reviewing with your staff, your city manager, your finance director, you know, I'm hoping that when the credit rating agencies review where you thought you would be at this time and where you actually are at this time, hopefully there will not be any change in your existing credit rating, which is a double A.
Suzanne, thank you very much for explaining that very, very tightly.
Sure.
Great, and thank you, Councilmember Woods, for those questions. I think it was very helpful for the public to help explain it for folks who, especially who read the staff report and people aren't familiar with these issues, so thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Middleton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Woods, for those really good questions. I'm inclined to support the staff report and support the staff's decision to essentially front-load the savings. I think it's a very good question as to whether or not we should spread the savings out over the course of the entire life, but I think the city manager makes a very good point that we may be back refinancing these bonds in the future. It's almost impossible to predict where the market is going to go, but we are working now on well over a decade, close to two decades, of extremely low interest rates, and everything that I see predicts that that will be the case for some time into the future, and for that reason, I'm inclined to support this and support front-loading the savings.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, yeah, I'll share that. I think it makes, obviously it makes sense to refinance, to save several million dollars, and I think front-loading in this situation does make sense, essentially since we will probably refinance these again at some point. But it's a great opportunity, given interest rates, to have more money, actually go to work for our residents than in interest. So really appreciate staff bringing this forward. So we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Middleton.
I.
Councilmember Woods.
I.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Kors.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, or four to zero.
Thank you very much. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. While the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers via telephone. So the clerk, do we have any speakers?
I'll try to reach right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've attempted to reach Mr. Brad Anderson twice. Again, no answer. Otherwise, that concludes public comment.
Great, thank you. So public comment on non-agenda items is closed. The next item is city council and city manager request for upcoming agenda development. City manager, anything from you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Actually, in, I'm going to ask Flynn to help me here. We've got the, coming on the next meeting is the Tower Market appeal, so that will be one of the larger items. And then Flynn, other that you have?
I don't believe I have any major, other major public hearings coming forward on November the 12th. We do have quite a number of consent items, but again, I don't think I have any additional public hearings, and I apologize for not having that list right in front of me.
So we're going to continue to work on the agenda development for the next meeting. However, we don't anticipate that it will be as full as we've had in the past.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Garner.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate, having a discussion about housing in our city and rental prices and just all of it. I know it's a huge issue, and I know that we have several things on the ballot that might influence how we move forward, but I just want to kind of continue to bring that up as something that I think is really important, especially if we're seeing so many people move into Palm Springs from Los Angeles and San Francisco and other places where there's a lot more, or I should say, higher wages that are kind of driving out our, our local residents who don't have those wages. I also wanted to raise the review of boards and commissions. That's been something that we've been wanting to discuss for a long time and haven't had a chance. And I think if it's possible for us to do that before the end of the year, before we start with a couple of new people to do the appointments, that that would be really helpful. So if that's something that we can do next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past few weeks, we experimented and had the closure of Palm Canyon. And we did that because we were trying to help the local business community. I thought it was a really important effort for us to try to do, but in trying to help the local business community, we moved probably more quickly than we should have, and it didn't come off with the kind of feel and look that we pride ourselves on in Palm Springs. But recently, Nona Watson of the Chamber of Commerce, Dan Schaefer from the Public Arts Commission, Jeffrey Bernstein have begun working on a project that they're referring to as the Palm Springs Promenade. I think it's a really interesting concept, and I would like to see us make their proposals very public and then set for public discussion at city council, a discussion as to whether or not we should move forward with a project along the lines of what they are prescribing. And I know there will be individuals within the business community that will be inclined to be very supportive, some who will be inclined not to be supportive. We need to hear from absolutely everyone, but I think this is the kind of issue that needs public debate and discussion. That's what's going to get us the very best product. I would like to ask, as soon as it is feasible for us to have this come forward for a full public discussion at city council.
Thank you. The other. Okay, seeing nothing else, thank you for those of you who are watching at home or watch it later on video. Thank you to staff and council and everyone who participated in public comment, and we will adjourn the meeting. The next regular city council meeting will be held on November 12th, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. Have a great night and rest of your week, everyone. Bye.